We'll call our June 6th meeting of the Cookville City Council to work. Will we have our old call, please?
Councilman Wabak.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Jason Ball, Life Church Associate Pastor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag.
You'll bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, I start off by declaring how good you are, Lord, and I thank you that we live in a town that still lifts your name above all names, Lord. I pray during the course of this meeting that you give the men and the women in this room discernment and wisdom, God, and that we can make not just good decisions, but God decisions, Lord. I thank you and I love you in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Adam 3, consider approval of agendas presented or there any changes.
Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. It's our motion.
So moved.
Motion is seconded and in discussion. All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under Old Business 5A, consider approval of amendments of council being held on May 16th, 2019. It's our motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded and in discussion. All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
5B, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading ordinance 0190503, amending the budgets of the general, state street aid, solid waste, drug, tree board, animal control, quality of life, and employee insurance funds of the city of Cookville for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Ms. Emble.
Mayor and council members, this is a second reading on amendments to the current year budget. We have made no changes to the ordinance since first reading and have received no calls or comments, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded and in discussion. All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, 6A, set a date, 7/18/19 for a public hearing on ordinance 0190604, abandoning and declaring a surplus property, a portion of the northern right-of-way of Whitson Avenue and a portion of the eastern right-of-way of Arthur Drive, and authorizing the exchange of said property for a portion of parcel 35.10 equal in size. And 6B, consider awarding bid for the relay panels for the electric department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under New Business 7A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0190502, amendments to the official street map. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, the amendments to the official street map are needed due to the construction of six new streets and the annexation of all or portions of three other streets since February of 18. Approximately 10,745 lineal feet or 2.03 miles of streets are proposed for addition to our official street map. Of course, the official street map, the purpose of it is to depict those streets for which the city is responsible for maintenance and to reflect the official names of those streets. The recommended amendments are depicted on the screen, also depicted on the amendments to the map that are shown on the screen and included in your notebooks. The amendments to the official street map have been approved by the planning commission and are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about the map items tonight? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Anyone have any comments or questions? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0190605, providing a tax levy for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Ms. Emble.
I can get it to work. Can you get the slide to move down one?
I have the mouse.
There you go. There we go. Thank you. Mayor and council, this is the first of three ordinances tonight that is relative to adopting a budget for fiscal year 20. This first ordinance will establish a property tax rate for fiscal year 20, which is the 2019 taxes. We are recommending a new tax rate of 94 cents, which is a 10-cent increase over the current rate. The total tax rate of 94 cents will be allocated as 71 cents to the general fund, 4 cents to the geo-debt service and solid waste, and 4 cents to economic development, 1 cent to the quality of life fund, and the tax increase of 10 cents will be allocated to a new fund called the transportation fund. The estimated penny rate used in preparing the budget was $86,418. Projected property tax revenue is $8,123,000, with $6,135 going into the general fund, $345,670 going into the geo-debt service, economic development and solid waste fund, $86,420 going into the quality of life fund, and with the new fund, 10 cents, $864,160 will go into the transportation fund. Don't have any problems with this.
Brenda, I can do it with the mouse if you...
Yeah, I don't know what happened here. Okay, this slide shows the 10-year growth in the penny rate. It has increased from $65,230 in 2009 to the $86,418 estimated for 2019. That's a 32.5% growth in 10 years. The impact of the proposed tax increase of 10 cents, for residential property appraised at $120,000, the increase in property taxes would be $30. For residential property appraised at $225,000, the increase would be $56. For a commercial property appraised at $250,000, we're looking at a $100 increase, and for a $500,000 appraised commercial property, we're looking at a $200 increase. And this slide is a slide we show you every year that shows where the 2018 property tax rate was, where the city lands compared to other cities in the state, and you can see we continue to be in the lower third portion of that list. And this slide gives you a history of where our tax rate's been since 2008. The last tax increase was for the 2012 property taxes. It was increased 5 cents from 85 cents to 90 cents. Again, this ordinance will set the tax rate at 94 cents, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. This will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, make an amendment to this tax rate change. As per our discussions this week, we've looked at several different road projects and street transportation projects that we're hoping to change and attack over the next few years. I do think, I do agree with this tax increase. I think it's important for us to raise the money to take care of our city streets and other infrastructure in the city. I do hope that, I'd like to propose, you know, one of the things that we discussed is bond issues and how we would use this infrastructure fund, and that we're going to be calling it a transportation fund, is that right? And how we go about using that. You know, my fear is that if we do have a bond issue for one or two major street projects, it could eat up some of the additional funds and smaller projects that the city might face. We identified 39 street projects that need to happen and an additional nine state and city street projects that need to happen in the near future. I think that having this amount of stuff on our plate, we really need to move forward and try to provide some additional income. If we raise the, or add to this fund, or create an extra pay-as-you-go fund of 5 cents, we can...
I'm only going to interrupt you just one second. Let's get a motion on the floor. We've got to make a motion, and we'll see if there's a second, and then we'll discuss everything that goes with the motion. See what I'm saying? So...
I motioned to increase a pay-as-you-go fund for infrastructure tax in addition to the infrastructure fund tax of 5 cents.
Okay, so your motion, you're making a motion to increase the property tax for the transportation fund to 15 cents?
With the restriction that 5 cents stays pay-as-you-go.
But it's all in transportation?
That's correct.
Okay, so 15 cent instead of the 10...
Well, it's in infrastructure, not necessarily just transportation. The sidewalks. We've renamed the account since we discussed it last week.
It's been, it was transportation the whole time that we talked about it during...
That motion can be not multimodal.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the whole time we've talked about it, it was transportation fund ever since budget work session. I'm not, I understand, I see what you, I see...
Yeah, it was labeled an infrastructure fund before. I just want to make sure. We are changing the terminology on that.
Yeah.
It was not an infrastructure fund at the budget work session.
No, it was. We discussed it as infrastructure fund, and we wanted to rename it transportation fund, and we discussed that at the budget work session.
But you didn't rename it.
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah, we did.
Now they have, yeah. This is the first renaming. The budget ordinance is a transportation fund.
At the work session back in May, the public work session last month, not on Monday, at the public work session we had last month, I was calling it an infrastructure fund, and that's the term we had used. And at the work session, we discussed it, and I think your preference was to call it a transportation fund, so we changed the term, and in the ordinance, we're calling it now a transportation fund.
Okay. So your motion, I want to make sure so we can call this, so you're making a motion to increase the, it's the transportation fund, right? To 15 cents?
Well, yes, but with the restriction that 5 cents is pay-as-you-go. In other words, we can't include that into a bond issue. That allows us, year after year, to continue to use that money raised. 5 cents on that tax dollar will raise 432,000.
Perhaps we could say 15 cents in a transportation fund, 5 cents of which is restricted to pay-as-you-go projects within the city. Is that proper wording, city manager?
I believe so, yes. I don't...
All right, so that is the motion. 15 cents total, 5 cents restricted to pay-as-you-go projects within transportation. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. So now, we'll open it up to discussion, so go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do think it's important to add this additional 5-cent tax increase. On the overall household, I think in general, it's important for us to have, attack these road problems, parking downtown, sidewalks. We've got ADA compliance issues that we're trying to attack in the near future. If we want to really see our city start to increase in, as the growth increases, if we don't want to hit people each year or every other year with tax increases, we need to go ahead and start solving as many of these problems as we have as fast as we can. And the importance of having, adding bike lanes to certain streets and improving our cityscape in downtown and streetscaping, it really is going to be important with our growth over the next few years. And I think while the economy's good and while things are doing well in the city, we've got low unemployment, it's a good time to invest back into our city versus waiting till down the road to make these investments.
All right. Councilman Miller?
So my mind was, I thought was made up until I started making some inquiries with some road builders around here, and I just asked how much liquid asphalt costs. In the last two years, it's went up 57%. It was, per ton, it was $335.91 in early 2017, and right now, it's $547.92 is how much a ton of liquid asphalt costs, and that's a pretty large, substantial increase in how much it costs to build a road. So my mind's kind of changed on what, how I feel. I need to look at these projects and how we fund these projects.
Councilman Wabak, do you have anything?
I think we've got a road problem in Cookville. Getting around town takes longer than it used to, and I've been here a long time with my wife, and I see the need for putting more money into building roads that the people of Cookville can use, particularly the internal arteries like Stevens and Walnut, such as those. That's where the people who live here get around town, and we have our own ways of getting around. Now, people that come in on 10th Street and Jefferson and Willow, I think we can get some state funding to help us with that, but I think we need to put some money into our own internal arteries to do this, and so this sounds reasonable.
Okay. That's Mayor, you have anything?
I do agree. I mean, we're the, what, 10th fastest growing metropolitan. We do, traffic is the number one problem that I continually hear about. I know that no one's going to like raising taxes, but at the same time, we've got problems that we need to address, and as Councilman Walker has said before, you know, if you don't go ahead and fix the roof now, then you're going to have the floors that get ruined, and then you're going to be, you know, have these problems that are going to get bigger. So I do think, I do think the city needs the money. I think we can do a lot with this money with a 5-cent increase. It's just things that we've got to address. No one's going to like it, I know that, but there's things that we need to do to make the city better, so I think it's a, it's a good idea.
I, as we've talked about this, the 10 cents, and I mean, that's, there's no magic number to this. We have many, many needs. As Councilman Walker said, you know, 40 some odd projects, I think they totaled almost $70 million, and that doesn't count state projects. We are behind in roads and intersections and other things. My concern is of doing this much at once because of, you know, other things that we've hit the citizens with, the attack, the increase in water rates being one, our gas, we had to adjust our gas rates being a, it's going to be net neutral, but it, people are going to be getting a gas bill in the summer, so the perception's going to be that that's more. Water rates had to go up to cover our infrastructure cost of water over the next several years. TBA will look at, their new board will look at a electric, potential electric rate. We don't know if they'll increase it or not. They did last year, so I am a little concerned that it's, this much, I was prepared for the 10 cents. I do have concerns of going that, however, the need is there. That is an absolute fact. We do have the need, and so that certainly, you know, whether you attack more now or phase it in a little bit over time would be something that I would probably prefer, but I certainly respect my other council members' opinions and viewpoints and understand their reasoning behind that as well. So any other comments or questions? So we're voting, it's 15 cents, 5 cents restricted to the fund that would be pay-as-you-go within the transportation fund. Okay? All vote?
Four yes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, 7C, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0190606, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service, nonprofit, and charitable organizations for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Ms. Emble.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance sets a total appropriation of $796,350. $662,600 goes to governmental agencies and joint ventures, and $133,750 to nonprofits. For the governmental agencies and joint ventures, the Putnam County Library is budgeted, appropriated at $330,000. The Tennessee Rehabilitation Center, $43,149. The Putnam County Senior Citizens, $50,000. The Upper Cumberland Regional Airport, $28,000 for operations, and a one-time capital appropriation of $25,000 to be used for matching funds for grant projects. The Chamber of Commerce will receive $30,000 for operations with $14,750 coming from the general fund and $15,250 coming from the utilities, and another $75,000 in designated appropriations, $50,000 for the Highlands Economic Partnership, and $25,000 for workforce development. Emergency Management Agency per contractor will receive $25,400. Cityscape will receive $25,000 for operations, and another $15,306 designated for Fall Fun Fest. The Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority will receive $7,745, and the Better Cookville Foundation will receive $8,000 restricted for 4th of July fireworks. For the nonprofits, the process was similar to prior years. An application was required, and we received 26 applications requesting $297,588. The amount available to allocate was $128,750. A nonprofit committee made up of seven Cookville citizens met, reviewed the applications, and they made the recommendations. And those recommendations are, went one too far ahead. The 13th Judicial District Recovery Courts, $15,000. The Biz Foundry, $7,200. Cookville Arts Council, $20,000. Cookville Children's Museum, $2,0250. Cookville Impact Leadership, $1,000. Court-appointed special advocates, $4,000. Cumberland Arts Society, $1,600. Genesis House, $12,000. Helping Hands of Putnam County, $12,000. HG Stevens Center for Child Abuse, $5,000. Kids Putnam, $6,000. The PATH Program at Plateau Mental Health, $3,000. Not too far ahead. The Putnam County Clean Commission, the committee recommended $4,000. The Putnam County Imagination Library, $3,000. UCHRA Meals on Wheels Program, $8,000. Upper Cumberland Child Advocacy Center, $6,000. Upper Cumberland Family Justice Center, $8,250. Veterans Honor Guard, $1,000. And WCTE Public Television, $9,450. So that's the total amount allocated by the committee of $128,750. After we had the public work session last month, you brought to our attention your concerns with cuts to the budget to the Putnam County Clean Commission. So we have amended this ordinance and increased the Clean Commission's allocation by $5,000, so they will receive $9,000. So the amount appropriated in the ordinance is $133,750. And applications received that were not funded in this ordinance was the Community for Heroes had requested $43,000, the Cookville Rescue Mission, $50,000. Cookville Regional Medical Center Charitable Foundation requested $10,000 for a cancer screening program. Mended Hearts, $1,800. The Pre-Arest Diversion Program at Plateau Mental Health requested $10,000. Putnam County Fair, $10,000. Putnam County Habitat for Humanity requested $5,000, and UCHRA requested $6,544 for the residential centers. Again, this ordinance appropriates $796,350, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anyone that would like to speak about any of these matters? No? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Any comments or questions?
I do want to just say thank you to the, to the members who were on this committee, because I know that was a very hard job for them to decide. These are all wonderful nonprofits that each, you know, represent a great, you know, way to help out in our community, so I want to thank them, and just the fact that our city were able to give to these nonprofits, I think is a wonderful thing, and I'm glad that we get to do it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think it is good to use nonprofits with city business. There's a lot of volunteer effort that comes with that, and that's very valuable to the city. It goes a long way. It's more than what's budgeted here. You can't count that volunteer work in dollars, so I appreciate everybody who's involved and all the hard work that goes into all these organizations.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All vote?
Five yes, votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 0190607, adopting the city of Cookville, Tennessee annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. Ms. Emble.
Mayor and council, this ordinance will establish the operating budgets of all the various funds of the city, and we're going to jump right into the general fund, the statement of operations for the new budget year. The general fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $19.7 million. This budget appropriates revenues of $28,408,000, or $28,408,000. Transfers in of $115,745. Operating expenditures, $27,841,000. And capital expenditures and non-recurring items of $1,805,000. So this budget actually has a deficit of $1,123,000, but the deficit is due primarily to the capital expenditures and the one-time non-recurring items. So the fund balance is projected to end the year, next year, at $18,643,000. On the revenue side, the revenue again is $28,408,000. Transfers in, $115,745 is coming from economic development and quality of life to cover designated appropriations for the Chamber of Commerce, the airport, and the Rail Trail Authority in Better Cookville. So the total revenue in this budget is $28,524,000. Mike, you're going to have to do it for... This pie shows you the revenue by source. Again, 50% of our general fund revenue comes from local option sales tax. 22% comes from property taxes. Next slide, Mike. And on the sales tax, being 50% of our revenue, the budget is projecting a sales tax growth of 2.75% over what we estimate to finish this year at, so for the first time, we are actually budgeting over $14 million in sales tax. And just a summary of the revenue side of the budget, revenues and transfers in in last year's budget was $27,738. This year's budget is $28,524. We're actually increasing the budget and revenues by $785,000, and you can see the detail there. The local sales tax makes up the biggest portion of that, $393,000. Growth in property tax is $81,600. Let me point out, the intergovernmental revenue is actually a decrease in projected revenue due to the phase-out of the whole income tax. We're budgeting less of that as that phases out over the next two more years. And then other revenue, $288,000 due to interest earning on our reserve funds. And this summarizes the revenue by category. Proposed budget of total revenue, $28,408,000, which is a 2.84% increase over last year's budget, and transfers in, $15,745 and $100,000 from the economic development fund. Moving on to the expenditure side, operating expenditures is $26,967,000. The appropriations to governmental agencies and nonprofits is $781,100. We just did that in the last ordinance. Transfers out to the animal control fund and the tree board, $93,000. And the non-recurring capital items is $1,805,235 for a total budget appropriation of $29,647,198. And this next pie chart shows you those, the operating expenditures by type, and we are in the service industry, so as you can see, 79% of our operating expenditures are personnel costs, salaries, and benefits. And then the next slide, talking about personnel, this budget funds 279 full-time positions in the general fund, and we are funding some new positions, a public information officer in the general department, and we're looking to add three firefighter positions. This budget does not have a cost of living increase, however, it does fund a potential 3% merit increase based on employees' job evaluation, and it also funds longevity pay. The budget also funds the city's required contribution to TCRS for pension for employees. This next slide shows you our operating expenditures by department, and you can see there are largest departments, our public safety departments, fire at 20% and police at 34%. And jumping into the department center, our police department, the proposed operating budget for the police department is $9,365,000, and for capital, $544,735, which will fund eight patrol vehicles and their equipment, AED replacements, timekeeping equipment, and one-year cost, as we talked about last month, for the car and body camera program, replacing that at $250,000. The fire department, we are appropriating $5,408,181 for operating costs and capital, $106,000, which we use to repair the driveway at Station 3 by a 12-lead AED monitor and a rapid-response medical vehicle for $55,000 and timekeeping equipment for $5,000. a rapid-response medical vehicle for $55,000 and timekeeping equipment for $5,000. Next department is Public Works. This proposed budget appropriates operating expenditures of $3,575,000 for this department and capital purchases of $254,000, which will buy them a brush truck for $160,000, traffic signal conflict monitors for $19,000, two pickup trucks for $44,000, and one SUV for $31,000. For the general department, the operating appropriation is $3,566,720. Capital purchases in this department is $780,000, which will purchase $5,000 for timekeeping equipment and the other $775,000 is to do renovations here at City Hall. Going to look at upgrading the HPA-C system, replacing the windows, and doing what we can to paint the outside of the building. The next department is the Leisure Services Department. The operating appropriation there is $1,975,395. Capital one-time purchases, $67,500. And that'll be used for the Sportsplex Youth Field's fencing, $32,000. A zero-turn mower for Sportsplex, $9,500. Lighting control console for CPAC at $14,000. And timekeeping equipment for that department for $12,000. The next department is Parks and Maintenance. Their appropriation for operations is $1,521,000. And one-time capital items there is $48,000. $10,000 will be used to do renovations and repairs at the Senior Citizen Center. $19,000 will purchase two zero-turn mowers. And $17,000 to replace the picnic tables and trash receptacles at Ken Creek Park and get ADA compliant picnic tables. And $2,000 for timekeeping equipment for that department. The next department is the Codes Department, which includes computer operations. Their operating appropriation is $937,550. Their capital is $5,000, which is going to be some hardware, software, which is cost shared with the utilities, a managed switch, and a new server for $15,000. And the last department in the general fund is the Planning Department. Their operating appropriation is $617,210 and they have no request for capital. So to summarize the expenditures, this budget funds operating expenditures of $27,748,000, which is about a 3% increase over last year's budget. Capital expenditures of $1,805,235. And transfers out to the Animal Control Board and the Tree Board of $93,000, bringing the total expenditures and transfers out appropriated in this ordinance to $29,647,198. And this slide summarizes the whole general fund. Total recurring revenues and transfers in, $28,524. Operating expenses and transfers out, $27,060. And the governmental agencies, nonprofits, $781. So we actually have an operating surplus of $682,120. But then when you subtract the capital purchases and the nonrecurring items of $1,805, that gets us to our deficit of $1,123,000. Any questions on the general fund or I'll move on to the next fund? Okay. The transportation fund is a new fund. In this slide now, will have to be updated for the next reading. But at 15... Well, I had 10 cents in there, it should be $864,000 in revenue. But at 15 cents, we're looking at $1,296,000, somewhere around there, that would go into that fund then with that different tax amount. Currently, we have budgeted as expenditures, one transportation project of renovations on 10th Street, 10th Street improvements of $600,000 to get this fund started. Next fund is a special revenue fund, state street aid. Fund balance is projected to start the year at $1,211,000. Revenues, which 1.1 million of that is state share gas tax, $2,709,000. Expenditures, $2,909,000. So we're projecting to use some of the fund balance next year and reducing it by almost $200,000 and ending the year with a little over $1 million in fund balance. The Solid Waste Fund is projected to start the year with a fund balance of $998,000. We put 4 cents of the property taxes allocated to this fund. So the revenue in there is property tax and charges for services and it's projected to be $2,670,000. Expenditures is $2,503,000. So we're anticipating a surplus next year of a little over $13,000 and a projected fund balance at the end of next year of $1,012,000. The General Improvement Bond Fund is starting the year with a little over $2 million. Revenue, which is bank interest of $10,000 on the funds that are in there. And we're proposing doing a bond proceeds, bond issue next year, $15 million for the construction of the police headquarters. And expenditures and transfers out is $16,176,668. There's money left over from some previous bond issues to do some projects. Dogwood Park improvements, there's money from a 2013 bond that's to be used on that. Cedar Street improvements, there was money in a 2017 bond to do that project. Other expenses is bond issue cost of $198,000. And then the new police facilities, we're budgeting at $15,560,000. And some other capital projects as we look down the road as to what's behind that. First and foremost is the police station. Trying to get the debt issued and get that construction started this fall. Then behind that, we're looking at borrowing money to do maybe an aquatic center and some CPAC renovations for after the police department moves out over there. And then we've talked about a fifth fire station and equipment to staff, to get that started. And then on Monday, we talked about local road improvements and how we might be able to accomplish some of those road projects with a combination of taxes and a future bond issue. And that leads us into our General Obligation Debt Service Fund, which is the fund that we use to make the payments on the debt that we have. And is projected to start the year with a fund balance of nearly $13 million. Revenue that goes in there, we allocate 4 cents of the property tax to this fund. The, in lieu of tax that we receive from the hospital is put into this fund also. That's at $700,000. And the state, our share of the state's sales tax, we also put into this fund. So it's projected to have revenue next year of $4,107,000. First time that we've budgeted over $4 million for this fund. Expenditures, which is our principal interest on our debts, is $3,561,000. So we're looking to add to the fund balance next year of over $500,000 and ending the year with $13,512,000 in fund balance. Our debt outstanding, at July 1st, we will have four bonds outstanding for a total of And we still have three variable rate loan agreements with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund for a total of $2,421,000. So we currently have debt outstanding of $18,986,000. And the next slide shows you the current debt service on that current debt that we have outstanding. And you can see after 2020, one of those municipal bond fund debts pay off. And so our annual debt service goes down to about $2.5 million and drops down from there. So if we did a $15 million bond issue to construct a police headquarters, what kind of impact does that have on our debt service? The amount in green there represents the debt service on a $15 million bond issue. And the line, just barely see it, a little red line there, it's about $4 million. That's the revenue that's currently going into that fund. So you can see that the debt service, even with a $15 million bond issue, is still well below the revenue that's going into that fund. So just to give you an idea on what kind of debt capacity we do have, if we did a couple other debt issues right behind that, and this slide shows you doing $7 million, another $7 million issue, another $5.5 million issue, and a three-year capital outlay note over the next three to four years. And you can see that's still that red line at about $4 million for about six years. Our debt service payments will exceed the revenue that's going into that fund and we will use up some of those reserves. But then if you go to the next slide, you'll see what kind of impact that has on our fund balance. And our fund balance will go down for about six years. And about 2026, it bottoms out at about $9.3 million, which is still well above that year's debt service payment, which would be $4.5 million. And then it would start growing from there. So that level, it is recommended that we keep a fund balance above one year's debt service payment. So the fund balance remains above that level. And the conclusion is that because we have a financially solid debt service fund, we have the capacity to do the large capital projects we are planning over the next few years and still maintain a healthy fund balance. When we did our 2017 bond issue, Moody's upgraded our bond rating to a AA2 from a AA3, citing our solid financial position and manageable debt burden. When we get ready to do the next bond issue, it'll be brought to council for your approval. There'll be resolutions that have to be done that you approve that issue or that debt. And the next fund is the Drug Fund. It's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $313,000. Revenue is budgeted at $50,000 and expenditures are appropriated at $171,500. We're planning on reducing the fund balance in that fund by $121,500. And some of the equipment that they're going to buy there, we've got it listed there. Three used vehicles, $57,000. A license plate reader, $22,000. Firing range improvements, I think we budgeted that for a few years yet and we haven't been able to get to that. So that's at $20,000. The next fund is the Tree Board Fund. We're projecting to start the year with a fund balance of $8,701. Revenue and transfers in from the general fund, $7,950. Operating expenditures, $8,180. Reducing the fund balance by $230 and ending at approximately $8,471. The Animal Control Fund accounts for the operations of the animal shelter. It's going to have a fund balance projected at the beginning of the year of $1,396,000. Revenue and transfers in, $418,850. Operating expenditures, $431,601. We're projecting to reduce the fund balance there by $12,751 to $1,383,486. This fund is supported by the local governments. We have requested governmental contributions from Putnam County for $88,000, from Monterey, $6,600. Allgood, $8,100. And from Baxter, $3,150. The Economic Development Fund. This fund is allocated 4 cents of the property tax. It's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $1,326,000. Revenue, $400,670. Expenditures, $268,200. And transfers out to the general fund of $100,000. And that covers the designated contributions to the chamber and to the airport. Quality of Life Fund is allocated 1 cent on the property tax. It's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $313,184. Revenue, $105,720. The appropriation for expenditures, $274,100. And transfers out to the general fund, $15,745. The Employee Health Insurance Fund. We are self-insured and we're projected to start the year with a fund balance of $4,236,000. Revenue in this fund is primarily premiums that come from the city on behalf of employee retirees, plus the employees and the retirees. It's projected to be $5,47,000. Expenditures are premiums for stop-loss and administrative fees to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee, who is our third-party administrator. That's budgeted $641,520. Other expenses are actuarial services at $11,000. And that leaves $4,394,480 to cover claims for next year. And this next slide kind of shows you a 10-year history of our claims, claims data. And it dropped down the last two years, but it's slowly creeping back up, so. And the next fund is the Workers' Comp Liability Fund. It's projected to start the year with a fund balance of $861,648. We use this fund to pay for workers' comp claims and liability claims and then they're billed back to the department. So the revenue that comes into this fund is actually reimbursements from the department. So the revenues are $665,000 and expenditures of $650,120. The next department is the Customer Service Department. This department, whatever expenditures they have is billed back to the utilities. The utilities help fund that department. So the revenues are projected at $1,645,476 and expenditures are $1,645,476. The expenditures there includes $210,000 in capital items. It's been over a year ago that city council approved us purchasing a new utility billing system. We've been working with the company behind the scenes to try to get our data extracted and into their system and working through that huge project. And we're hoping to go live in September with this new system. So that's part of the capital in that department. And we're going to move on to the utilities. The Electric Department has cash reserves projected to be at the beginning of the year of $12,585,000. Revenue, $58,050,000. Add-back depreciation and amortization of $2,825,000. And expenses there of $60,143. So they're projecting to have revenues over expenses there of $732,000 and increasing their cash reserves next year to $13,318,000. The next utility is the Gas Department. The Gas Department is projecting to start the year with cash reserves of $15,92,000. Revenue is budgeted at $10,386,000. Provision for depreciation, $675,000. And expenses next year are budgeted at $10,469,000. So they too are looking to add to their reserves next year, increasing cash by $591,000 and ending the year with $15,684,000. And the next utility is the Water Department. The Water Department is projecting to start the year with a little over $6 million in cash. Revenue next year is budgeted at $15,081,000. Provision for depreciation and amortization, which is non-cash, $3,693. And expenses of $21,749,000. So they are projecting, with the planned capital improvements that they need to do next year, they're planning on reducing their cash reserves by $2,974,000 and ending the year with cash reserves a little over $3 million. And the last department that we have, or last budget for you to look at, is Cookfield Regional Medical Center Authorities Budget. And they're projecting operating revenue next year of $295,487,000. Operating expense, $276,000, $1,000. Non-operating net expense, $14,228,000. So they're projecting next year to have a net income of a little over $5 million. And some other items for your approval that's in the appropriation. Their non-cash depreciation and amortization is budgeted at $13,578. Payments in lieu of taxes to the city is at $700,000. Their departmental capital expenses, $12,42,000. Expansion capital expenses, $4,150,000. Debt service payments, the principal portion is $3,479,000. And the interest payments on that debt is budgeted at $1,986,000. And they're projecting to end the year, next year, with cash reserves of about $59 million. And this last slide kind of summarizes all the funds that's in the ordinance before you this evening. And the grand total of all the transfers out and proposed expenditures are at $465,826,000. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about the budget on any matter? All right. We'll close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any comments, questions from the council after that very thorough delivery? All right, all vote?
Bob Yesfolds, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement for city manager designated James Mills. We are to not have the contract for James Mills to become our city manager. We're blessed in the city...
We're blessed in the city of Cookeville that we're able to retain good talent, great talent, and we're certainly going to, well, I'll make the motion that we approve this contract and then we'll discuss it.
Second.
Motion of second. All right. So we'll have discussion. I was just going to say, we're certainly blessed that we're, we have great talent and that we're able to retain that talent and quality staff and the continuity of services and what will happen with, with James Mills becoming our city manager. We're very, very thankful and blessed and certainly would be remiss if I didn't say how thankful we were for Mike Davidson and for what he has done and meant, meant to this city, both as a financial, finance director and now as city manager for the past four-plus years. He's just a phenomenal human being and certainly will be missed and proud that he has an opportunity to, to move to, I won't say greener pastures, but definitely will be gas-filled pastures, I guess. But very, very thankful for that. But any, any questions from the council? I'll certainly can go over a couple of the highlights of the contract if you want me to, that you all have in front of you. The, the contract has the annual salary of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. It will have him involved in any of his professional organizations and those are the main, just that he will be under an annual performance review, just as city manager Davidson was. And then that will be done by the, our city attorney. Each of us will perform that and then turn it in to the city attorney, then he will rate that and then go through HR to decide on any evaluation or any compensation change going forward. So those are the parameters of, of the contract. Are there any comments or questions? Any council want to say anything about?
I think it's a good contract and...
Very good. James, you want to, you want us to, you want us to vote first? All vote, all vote. Okay, now you can say something, James.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for this opportunity and I appreciate you having the confidence in me that I can help to lead this great city. I've had the good fortune for the twenty years I've worked for the city to work for two exceptional city managers. It'd be hard to find two better leaders or finer men than Jim Shipley or Mike Davidson, and I'm lucky to count both of them as friends. I'm especially appreciative of Mike. He's spent numerous hours with me over the last few months trying to bring me up to speed on several city matters. I've been impressed with his knowledge and I'm thankful for his patience as I bombarded him with questions, trying to learn as much as I could from him and take advantage of it while we still got him. Mike is truly a man of integrity and he sincerely cares about this city and he will be missed. When the council first approached me about the city manager's position, I took a few weeks to think and pray about the opportunity. One of the things that helped me make the decision was the support from my fellow directors and employees. Over the past few weeks, I've spent time with several of the directors to learn more about their departments. And I've been so very impressed with the knowledge and professionalism of our employees and amazed with the quantity and quality of work that's done by each of our departments. And it's reassuring to know that we have such great employees. And in closing, I'd like to thank the council again, and I also want to thank my wife, Kim, for allowing me to accept this position. We are blessed to live and work in Cookeville. There are many great things ahead for this city and I'm excited about being a part of its bright future. Thanks again.
Mike, this won't be your final word, but do you have anything you want to say?
No, I would like to say, as James said, I work with some fantastic people with the city of Cookeville. The directors are, are top-notch and I have truly, over my twenty-two years, been blessed to work with, with great directors. We've got great staff in all the departments that truly care about the services that they provide to all the citizens of Cookeville. It has been, the last few months, working with James really closely, it really has been a pleasure. We have had a lot of interesting conversations the last couple of months, just trying to work through some city matters. I will miss working with everyone. I'll miss working with the council. It's a great council that has been truly supportive of me, the previous council, this council, as well as been truly, again, supportive of myself. And I will miss everyone. I'll, I'll miss being a part of the city, but I know the city's in good hands with James and the directors and the council too. So, thank you.
The fact that James was able to work with Mike over the past two months has been, just been invaluable. And so we're very, very thankful you stayed, Mike, and, and that you were able to do that. Do want to read, the reception will be held immediately following the meeting on June twentieth here in City Hall Lobby. Extend the invitation to the community to attend and join as we welcome James Mills as city manager and extend the, the best wishes to Mike as he embarks on his new endeavors. So that'll be at the conclusion of the next council meeting on June twentieth. All right. Seven F, consider approval of audit contract for years ending in 2019, 2020, and 2021. Ms. Emmer.
Mayor and council, just two more short things from me and then you'll be done with me this evening. The city is required to contract with an independent public accountant to perform an audit of the records of the entire city departments. We have met and discussed the renewal of the city's audit contract with Duncan Wheeler and Wilkerson. They have agreed to renew a contract for the next three years to perform audits for fiscal year nineteen, fiscal year twenty, and fiscal year twenty-one. Their fee for the audit work will be, for fiscal year nineteen, fifty thousand plus expenses not to exceed sixty thousand, six, six hundred dollars. For fiscal year twenty, fifty-two thousand five hundred plus expenses not to exceed seven hundred dollars. And for fiscal year twenty-one, fifty-five thousand plus expenses not to exceed eight hundred dollars. And I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. Ms. Emmer.
Mayor and council, we have, we carry a self-insured insurance plan for our employees and our retirees and their dependents. As part of that coverage, we carry stop-loss coverage to protect against large claims. Our current stop-loss policy is with Blue Reef, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield company, and we've been with them for the last five years. The contract expires June thirtieth, at the end of this month. And the current coverage is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar individual deductible and a sixty thousand aggregate deductible. The premiums for that are twenty-one seventeen for a single contract and fifty-three fifteen for a family contract. And that, the premiums for that are about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars a year. We're recommending renewing with Blue Reef for one more year and keeping the same coverage at a hundred and sixty, sixty. The premiums will go, go up slightly. A single contract will be twenty-one forty-eight. Family contract, fifty-eight ninety-four, for an estimated annual premium of two hundred and seventy-six thousand. So it's about a nine percent increase, but given the claim history that we have and some of the high-cost claimants that we're currently covering, we're recommending to keep the same coverage and pay the additional in premium. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider approval of the design concept for improvements to North Dixie Avenue from Eighth Street to Twelfth Street and North Mailer Avenue from Sixth Street to Eighth Street. Mr. Mills.
Mayor and council members, Dr. Oldham, president of Tennessee Tech University, submitted a request to approve a design concept for improvements to North Dixie Avenue and Mailer Avenue. Here's the general location, but as you can see on this screen, North Dixie Avenue is a city street that bisects the Tennessee Tech University campus. University officials indicate that the current conditions of the street are not conducive to provide safe passage for students that cross this street daily. They had a study done in 2013 that indicated more than three thousand students a day cross this street. The university has submitted a design concept to reduce the existing four-lane section of North Dixie Avenue to a two-lane tree-lined boulevard with bike lanes and left-turn lanes at intersections. I'll have a, if I go to this one, this is a better illustration of what they're proposing to do. The proposal includes a tree-lined median that would run along the center of the boulevard with fencing and landscaping that would restrict pedestrian traffic across North Dixie and provide dedicated pedestrian crossing points. The university has also requested to apply the same concept to Mailer Avenue from Sixth to Eighth, excuse me, and the design concept includes installation of a roundabout on North Dixie Avenue at the intersection of Mailer and East Eighth Street. This is intended to address the complicated intersection, if you're all familiar with this, and help calm traffic along North Dixie Avenue. North Dixie Avenue is a two-lane street south of Eighth and north of Twelfth. It transitions to a four-lane facility between these intersections. This section of the street also has a fifteen mile per hour speed limit. Mailer's a three-lane street that transitions into a four-lane facility at the Sixth Street intersection and terminates at the intersection of North Dixie Avenue. This has been reviewed by the various city departments. There were some concerns about the possible impact on utility, underground utility lines that are located and where this would be completed, and they want to make sure that the university and they are aware that we need to take care on any improvements that are done there. This does not request, the request does not involve any abandonment of right-of-way. It potentially will involve the dedication of additional right-of-way that'll be necessary for the, the roundabout. But all you're considering here tonight is approval of the general design concept. We're not approving any final, final plans. This project still has to be designed and still have to be submitted to the city for approval. And it was recommended, the general design concept was approved by the planning commission with the understanding that city officials and city engineers, including Greg Brown and his guys, would be involved in whatever design it's come up with. And the planning department would also recommend for the council approval of the general design concept.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Mills.
Yeah, um, thank you very much for working with us. We're, we've got road issues in Cookeville and I just got a couple of things. I want, when you're designing it, I kind of want to make sure that the roadway maintains the current traffic capacity because that's something that's really beneficial to me. And I really like the managed pedestrian flow that you're putting in there. That's going to make it safe for everybody and actually provide brakes for traffic to keep flowing. So, yeah, thank you very much for your help.
Any other comments or questions?
I think it's going to be a beautiful addition to that area. And I was pointing out, you know, it was originally Dixie College. So it's kind of fitting, I guess, it was named after the street. So now we're going to kind of do some enhancement to kind of, to bring that out. So appreciate all the universities doing.
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven I, consider authorizing grant application for the Tennessee Agricultural Enhancement Program to plant trees along Tennessee Avenue. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, this is a Tennessee Agricultural Enhancement Program grant through the Tennessee Department of Agriculture. If successful, we would be purchasing eighty-five trees that would be installed on Tennessee Avenue at the intersection with West Broad. The total cost of the project is five thousand and fifteen dollars. It's a fifty-fifty match, so the city's obligation will be two thousand five hundred and seven dollars. I would request your permission to apply for this grant.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, consider authorizing the city manager to execute amendment to the Cookeville Managed Fiber Services Contract with Twin Lakes Telephone Cooperative relative to establishing downtown Wi-Fi project with Appalachian Regional Commission Grant. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to report we're continuing to move forward on our downtown Wi-Fi grant. As you'll recall, earlier in the year, you all approved a competitive contract with Twin Lakes Telephone to provide fiber to the city through our managed network. What we are doing here is amending that contract to include a separate internet connection for the Wi-Fi at a hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-nine dollars a month. And then any location that we put the Wi-Fi spot would be about sixty-four dollars a month. It was important to us, it was important to Twin Lakes, that we keep our internal Wi-Fi system separate from what we'll be providing out in the public. So what we're asking you to do is authorize city manager to amend the contract to include these costs for our downtown Wi-Fi program.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And seven K, consider rewarding bidder for the telephone carrier services, five-year contract for the new phone system, all departments. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, at our last meeting, you approved the purchase of new phone equipment for all city departments. And the next phase of that was the carrier services that we need to, to be able to make those phone calls. So our IT department put together a bid and we received three bids. Twin Lakes, Frontier, and Spectrum all submitted a bid for the services that we needed. We're recommending a five-year contract to the low bidder, which was Twin Lakes. And the, the monthly fee for those carrier services is two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents a month. We would recommend the low bidder, Twin Lakes, for the five-year contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion of second. Any discussion? All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda portion of the meeting. Appreciate everyone's patience for that. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council on non-agenda items tonight? All right, council members, anybody have anything? Great TV auction starts tonight. You can tune in next Thursday night to see the mayor and vice mayor as host of the WCT auction, see how that goes. We'll be on there. So, yes, sir.
I've got something to announce again. B Rock is being dedicated, I'm going to announce that the next two, this one and the next one. And then B Rock is being dedicated on the twenty-second of June, on Saturday morning at ten AM, and it's going to Monterey courtesy of Mr. Walker. Councilman Walker's great uncle.
Very good.
That's a good thing. And, and we dedicate the skate park just before the council meeting.
June twentieth.
And then we have a reception afterward.
That's right.
Fun-filled meeting next week, next time.
Yes, sir.
Landry Wilcox of the Cookeville High School Cross Country Team won the Tennessee High School Girls Runner of the Year this year, so that's a pretty big honor for our high schools.
Very good. All right.[1798.23]